Herndon Town Council Public Hearing, October 24th, 2017.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We're pleased to see so many of you here. We will call the meeting to order and invite you to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on our agenda tonight, we have a couple of sets of minutes up for approval. Is there a motion to approve the October 4th work session minutes?
So moved.
Discussion on the motion. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, that motion carries. Next up, is there a motion to approve the October 10th public hearing minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 And those opposed, that motion also carries. We have no presentations this evening, so that brings us right into comments from the town manager. Mr. Town Manager, do you have anything for us this evening?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. Earlier this month, at the VML Conference in Williamsburg on October 3rd, the VML awarded the town the Green Government Challenge Platinum Award, and I quote, "For successfully implementing environmental policies and protecting practical actions to reduce carbon emissions." And Dana Singer, when you get a chance, come pick that up for your fine work in that regard. I also wanted to point out, too, that earlier this month, George Mason University, College of Humanities and Social Sciences, Department of Criminology, Law and Society, awarded to Chief Maggie DeBoer their 2017 Distinguished Alumni Award. This award goes out to, was based on her professional accomplishments spanning 31 years, and her work as president for the nonprofit organization Police Unity Tour. And as a sidebar, I've had the opportunity to attend regional meetings with Chief DeBoer, and it is truly, she garners a great deal of respect, not only in the law enforcement community, but also with elected officials, with my peers in other jurisdictions. When she talks in a room, people listen, and they look for her for guidance and advice. We are very blessed to have Chief DeBoer on board, and it seems like George Mason University seems to think they're blessed to have her and his alumnus. So congratulations, Chief. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cunningham, Mr. Davidson, I apologize. Do you have any comments for us?
Not this evening, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McKenna?
Nothing this evening.
Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you. I want to take a moment to point out some really fantastic social events coming up, sponsored by the Parks and Recs Department and our golf department. On Friday, join the Herndon Community Center for Spooktacular for children ages three to eight. One of the best things about having a small town is we do a lot of fun stuff. So if your kids haven't been over to Spooktacular, go over and take them. It's really cute. And also, save up some time, break out your golf clubs for the Gobbler's Challenge at the golf course. Golfers will golf any time of year. And Jean would love to see you. We have a fabulous course, and 4.2 square miles, we have something for everybody. So take advantage of the nice fall weather and go visit our wonderful golf course.
Thank you very much. Ms. Friedrich?
I had the pleasure today of going over to Herndon Elementary School with a number of my colleagues here, and participating in their, I think it was called the Health Day.
Yeah, their real food for kids.
Real food for kids. There were presentations by Nova Hospital on, obviously at the children's level, on eating properly. And then we all got to go outside, and I got to hop on one foot in the mud. So, I mean, it was, it was a fantastic day, I have to tell you. All of us cheered on the kids, and they were pretty excited and happy, and it was nice to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Olem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I got to attend an event last Friday. It was the 2017 Arts Awards, and folks from Oliver Fairfax County were there, elected officials from the state, as well as the supervisors and town and city officials. And it was very nice. Jerry Gordon had some very nice things to say about arts in communities, as well as Sharon Bulova giving a shout out to Herndon, and she even recognized all the Herndon folks that were there. So that was really nice. And also, we have another play at Next Stop Theater called Assassins. It's a very thought-provoking, it's not quite like Catch Me If You Can or something like that. It's a little more serious.
Sounds really light.
These assassins are people that either did or attempted to assassinate presidents. So it was a pretty interesting play they had there. And last but not least, the first week of November, Gracie will be coming to town. That's my mom, if you don't know who that is. She'll be here for about a month. Please contact me.
I'm not sure I understand.
Oh dear.
Gracie is watching.
I know, she's watching. So anyway, give me a shout out. She'll be here for about a month, as usual, through Thanksgiving, so let me know. She'd love to see you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to let everyone know about an upcoming event, if you're interested. On November 11th, there's an event called Dancing with the Services. So the Fred Astaire Dance Studio, the local dance studio which is in Herndon, has invited elected officials and other members of the Armed Services and police officers to be matched up with a professional dancer, and as a fundraising campaign. And then there'll be an event where we will perform for you. So I am the designated elected official of the services, as well as there are two Herndon police officers, Officer Denise Randalls and Officer, Lieutenant Steve Thompson. There's a Fairfax County Police Officer, there's a woman from the Air Force, Army. So the services and myself and our cops will be represented, so I encourage you to come, if you're interested. Again, it's on November 11th. It's at the Dulles Hyatt. They just moved the location, so it is bigger, and there's more tickets available now. If you're interested, go to dancereston.com. And I'm going to talk to them about why it's not danceherndon.com, but we're going to work on that.
And there is no way I'm missing that event. I just want you to know. It's going to be great. I'm really excited about it. I wanted to thank Parks and Rec and Herndon High School, and everybody who played a part in making the Herndon Homecoming Parade such a success last weekend. It really is my favorite day in Herndon. The whole town comes out, half the town's in the parade, half the town's watching the parade. So it was really, it was really great. So thanks to Parks and Rec. We had a new lineup this year coming out of Herndon Middle School, so that we didn't block Sterling Road. And it seemed like it went off without a hitch, so that was a great idea, whoever thought of that. Next week, actually, on Halloween morning, we will be hosting the Fourth Annual Mayor's New Business Breakfast, where we meet and greet with some of our new businesses. Looking forward to that. I hope they show up in costume, might keep it fun. And also, speaking of Halloween, just keeping in mind, next Tuesday night, it is the fifth Tuesday, so we will not have a meeting, and there will be a lot of kids out after dark trick-or-treating, so look out for that. We do have a change in our council meeting schedule. Typically, we meet on Tuesdays, but the first Tuesday in November is November 7th, which is Election Day for our statewide and the House of Delegates, and I think there may be a bond referendum on there as well. So make sure you get out and vote, and then join us on Wednesday night at 7:00 PM in the conference room next door. We'll be having our work session on the 8th, Wednesday the 8th. And finally, I wanted to mention the Herndon Farmers Market has extended the past couple of years into November. The last, the last day will be Thursday, November 9th, so I hope you still get a chance to get out there and visit the market. The next portion of the agenda is for comments from the audience that are not related to one of our public hearing items. So if you're here tonight to talk about downtown, that'll be next during our public hearings. But if there's any item that you'd like to speak to us about that's on the consent agenda, or anything that's on your mind that you'd like to bring to the attention of the council, we invite you to come forward, state your name and address for the record. Please, you have up to three minutes to make your comments, and when the red light comes on, please try to wrap up. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on one of our consent items, or anything that's not a public hearing item? Yes, sir. Come on down.
Good evening. Steve Munt, 814 Locust Street, Herndon, Virginia, 32-year veteran, and I'd like to state a concern that I have. As you know, I've asked both the town and the county about the flag at the fire station, and was assured that by the 8th of October, we would fly the flag correctly. To date, the flag has still not been flown correctly. It hangs on the building, it gets wrapped around the pole. And I would ask that either we take the flag down until such time as it can be flown properly, or we get an answer back to when it's going to be corrected and can be flown properly. But we need to correct this. Like you, I thought the Herndon Parade was marvelous, but it concerned me as a veteran, as the flag came down the street, that there were so many people that chose to sit on the curb or in lawn chairs rather than stand up when the nation's colors passed by. You know, I've known too many people who've given the ultimate sacrifice for this nation. And I know they agree with me, and I agree. You have the right to do that. You can sit all day long if you want, but it hurts those of us who've served. And when you look at a wounded warrior, or a wounded veteran, or an honored hero, whatever we'd like to name them, and they would do anything and give anything to be able to stand when their colors came by, and they would do anything and give anything to be able to come back and serve with the same people that, with who they were wounded with, you just need to take into consideration how those people around you feel about those things. Break, I got just a little bit more time. Second thing that concerns me is the new brewery that's coming in. One of the things that I understand is the beautiful artwork that we had put up for Herndon on the back of the building, that shows the beautiful landscape and everything else. That building is part of the demolition plan. I would ask that somebody consider taking that part of the wall, moving it along Center Street, facing down towards the middle school, and put that back up so we might be able to preserve that art, unlike so many things that we tend to tear down rather than save. So that's what I had. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on any item that's not our public hearing items this evening? Okay, thank you very much. I had a feeling that's why you guys were all here. So we do have two public hearings this evening. They are Resolution 17G85, to consider a proposed comprehensive agreement between the town of Herndon and Comstock Herndon Venture LC, and Ordinance 17023, which is to provide for the sale of town-owned land on Center, Eldon, and Station Streets, and any town interest in the eventually vacated portion of Vine Street for the redevelopment as a mixed-use town center project, art center, and associated parking structure. Tonight, I'm going to ask the town manager to present the staff reports on these two items concurrently. And then I'll open the public hearings concurrently, but after we hear testimony, which I think is why most of you guys are here this evening, we will have separate motions and separate votes on each item. So with that, I'll open the public hearing and state for the record that comments received on these items have been entered into the record. A whole bunch of them. So they're right here. And Mr. Town Manager, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. We're here tonight to talk to you about the proposed agreement, the comprehensive agreement between Herndon and Comstock Herndon LC. This agreement has been negotiated over the past six months or so, culminating on September 12th, when we finally came to terms on this structured agreement that you have before you tonight. I want to start tonight, talk, just introducing the negotiating team that we had with us. And they're here, Tom Falk, a contract attorney from Reed Smith, an expert in public-private partnerships. We have Len Wales, who was a consultant with, that we brought on board. He was a former debt manager for Fairfax County. He was instrumental in the Wheelie Avenue Project negotiations from the Fairfax County side of the house. Jordan Rosenstadt, a commercial real estate consultant, who was, brought a wealth of knowledge on how this, this whole process would unfold, and brought a wealth of new ideas to the negotiating table. Also, Lisa Yates, our town attorney, was very instrumental. From the attorney side, missing this evening is Bob Diamond, who was our condominium expert. He is probably the preeminent condominium expert in the Commonwealth of Virginia. We also had Dennis Holsey, our economic development manager. And then from time to time, when we hit certain key, critical, technical points where we had to seek specific advice in certain areas, we had Lisa Gillar, our Director of Community Development, Dana Singer, our Director of Public Works, and Jenny Tripley, our Director of Finance, were brought in at various points throughout the negotiation to advise us on certain elements of the agreement as well. So let's talk about the area. What is the downtown? What are we talking about here? Well, if you look up on your screen, you're going to see an area of land that's going to be surrounded by a yellow line. It's the municipal parking lot. It's the old Subaru dealership. It's the current art space. It's bordered on one side by Eldon Street, our one main street, and on the other side by the WOD Trail, our other main street. It also is bordered by Center Street and Station Street. That's the area that we're discussing here this evening. So what's the history of this development? Downtown redevelopment has been discussed in the town for about 30 years. I think we've traced it back to the mid-'80s, is when it first arose as an issue with council. It's been a policy objective for many years, to get to a point where we have a redeveloped area of the downtown. Finally, in 2015, we issued a public-private partnership, proposed RFP. We received two responses. After public meetings, public input, council evaluated the RFPs and decided to enter contract negotiations with Comstock Partners. This just gives you a just general understanding of the rendering that they provided us as one conceptual design of the project. So what is the Comstock proposal? It is 281 apartment units, is 17,600 square feet of retail, and 18,000 square foot art center, a public parking garage with 761 spaces, of which some of those will be ours, and we'll discuss those later, three public plazas and a paseo. For those who don't know what a paseo is, that's a fancy word for promenade, and an arts walk. This is the general layout that Comstock proposed, for these elements to be dropped into that footprint that you saw just a few slides ago. So what you see is along Eldon Street, the bottom of that picture is retail, just to the left of Ice House Cafe. Behind it is a parking garage surrounded by apartments on all sides, to hide the parking garage from view. There'll be apartments to the north of that garage, running along the WOD Trail. Block C along Station Street is the 18,000 square foot art center with retail in that same building. And as you see, the arts walk is that promenade that you see that connects the WOD Trail down to Eldon Street. So connecting those two main streets with a pedestrian-friendly place where you can program, have activities in there. It's wide enough for things to occur, connecting those two main streets of the town. So as we set out in this negotiation, the council gave staff certain goals that we were to achieve in this agreement. This had to be an economically viable project, not just for the town, but for the developer, because it makes no sense to have something that Comstock can't, can't be economically viable for them, because it would fail. And we don't want this to fail. We are looking at a vision of an energetic, a vibrant area. The people come, they want to go to the retail that's there, they want to go to activities at the art center, they want to live, they want to recreate, they want to be around this downtown. We want this to also feed into our businesses outside of this area. So we need something vibrant to occur here. So it has to be economically viable for all parties. We wanted to increase the public shared parking. On that lot right now is 162 parking spaces. That's it. It's spread out over that entire lot, 162 parking spaces. We want to increase that and drive it into a garage, pardon the pun, on the drive. The council was interested in getting an art center, and arts walk is a central piece to help drive the energy and vitality of this development. They wanted us to protect the town from as many risks as we possibly could. You can't protect from everything, and trust me, you sit in a room full of lawyers, they will invent risks that you never in your wildest dreams would have imagined. But we tried to protect from the most significant ones that we thought were the most probable. We had to observe legal constraints. This was an interesting piece, because Comstock's a commercial entity, we're a governmental entity. We have two roles in this, in this deal. We're a government that's going to have to regulate what's going to happen over there, and we're the owner of the property. So we have a proprietary role and a governmental role. So we had to observe the legal constraints around all of that, as well as the obligations for councils to fund, and indebtedness, we had to control as well. We had to obtain fair market value for the property we were going to convey. We had to minimize disruption through transitional plans for parking, and for the current art space that's over there. And we had to find a reasonable process for us to work with Comstock. Again, this has got to be a viable, vibrant project. We both have to be engaged. We both have to make it that way. So we have to have a process for which we can do that. It was interesting, since I was named acting town manager back in February, all the way through, when the council chose to hire me in July, I kept getting questions of, why is this taking so long? You know, before this, my big real estate deal was buying a house, which was about five weeks, four weeks, until you got to close. You broke the contract, you got there. This was an incredibly complicated deal, because you have several elements in this. First off, you have to have a comprehensive agreement of how the parties are going to interact with one another throughout the entire process. You have a post-agreement pre-closing. We're going to convey property to them for them to construct. So we had to hit all the issues around preparing to close on that property. We had to deal with the closing itself in this document. We had to deal with how the construction was going to occur in this document. Then, once the construction's complete, the town is getting property conveyed back to its ownership in this development. And because the garage is 700 spaces, and we're going to get 339 of them, we had to establish condominium regimen, for which how this all will operate in one building. Then we had to come up with how we're going to live with this in perpetuity in the condo docks. So as you see, this is a very, it was a very complicated deal with a lot of elements, and that's why it took the six months it took to get us to this point. So what are some of the things we need to worry about, pre-closing on town property? Well, Comstock, from the time presuming council adopts the agreement, we sign the agreement, Comstock over the next year or so, and we're going to get into that timeframe later, they will design this, they will design this project. The town will have input on its components. So the garage components, the town will have input. The art center component will have input, arts walk will have input. They have to get all the governmental approvals and permits that they would have to get regardless. Again, our governmental role is separate and distinct from our proprietary role. It stays, we could not negotiate away our governmental powers. We didn't want to, we couldn't, under the law, do it, even if we wanted to. The town is responsible for gaining offsite easements. We have to vacate part of Vine Street. We have to subdivide one parcel that bleeds out into Station Street, and we have to provide good title. To reiterate, governmental powers remain intact. We will still regulate this. They still have to draw building permits, it still has to go through an HPRB approval process, it still has to go through site plan review. All of those things still have to occur. Also, there are no monetary claims allowed against the town for any pre-closing circumstances. That was another element of the pre-closing. During the closing, what are the conditions that have to occur for us to be able to close on this property? Now, bearing in mind, there are two closings. This is the closing when we pass the property to them, not when they pass back our elements. Well, first off, they have to have approval of all the plants, the arts unit, the arts walk, the garage, all of it, transitional parking, art center relocation, all these elements have to be agreed to. Comstock has to go out and get financing. This project still has to be economically viable during this process as well. Again, it makes no sense for this project to go forward in a state where it cannot succeed. This doesn't make sense. One of the protections we were able to craft into this deal is when Comstock goes to get their financing, we will be at the table, because we're going to be negotiating an intercreditor agreement among the three parties, a tri-party agreement between us, Comstock, and the lender, to protect our rights during the construction phase of this project. There are potential delays, as I said a little bit earlier. We don't want to go forward with a project that will fail, so that we have to have the economic conditions right for this to proceed. There is a provision to market pause this prior to closing for up to two years, if the market isn't stable enough for this project to succeed. Protections to the town in the closing. Number one is we have a right to reenter. If something fails after closing, we have the right to go back and try to get our property back. This was a critical point. Number two, we were going to record a parking easement on that property for 162 spaces, which means if Comstock, for some reason, fails, and this goes back to the bank, whoever gets that property has to provide the town 162 spaces on that property, because that's what we're giving up. We're going to take this comprehensive agreement, and we're putting a memorandum into the deed. So whoever ends up with the property, doesn't just get the property, they get the deal, and they have to live up to the terms of the deal. During the construction phase, Comstock's responsible for retaining the general contractor. They need to be 100% bonded. That's pretty normal. That's routine. The town will have some approval authority in this matter as well. For the general project, the town is not responsible for any costs or changes and increases in cost, with the exception of a few things, five things in general. Number one, environmental. We had an auto dealership on a piece of this land. We have environmental reports that there is going to be required, some cleanup. So that is our land. We're responsible for cleaning it up. We are subcontracting that, in essence, back to Comstock to clean it up on our behalf. And we'll get into how that's going to work in a moment. We have a box culvert that runs under the middle there, that carries stormwater from the south side of town to the north side of town. If they unearth that culvert and there's any damage, we don't want to pause the project, have us run out and get a contractor to fix our culvert. We've put provisions in here for Comstock to fix that culvert on our behalf. Transitional parking. We have 162 spaces over there. They're in the public shared parking program. We made a commitment to our businesses that we would provide them 162 spaces. We are going to live up to our commitment to provide them 162 spaces, and we're going to do it through a plan, working with Comstock, to either, A, find 162 spaces in a limited area of downtown, which I'll show you in a moment, or put it onsite during the transition, or a mixture of all of the above. We're not sure how that's going to work out, but those are the general guidelines we have laid out in this agreement for us to negotiate that provision of public shared parking. Art center relocation. And obviously, if we have any other change orders, we're responsible for the cost of those change orders. The transitional parking plan that we talked about, Comstock and the town will approve that together. That's going to be worked on together with the provisions that we've already baked into the cake as our guidance, our public share parking obligations being chief among them. We've set aside a budget allowance of $500,000 over the course of this contract, over the course of the construction, to provide for this parking. It is our obligation to our businesses. We're going to pay $500,000 to Comstock to help us live up to that obligation. They have to provide 162 spaces. They have to be available 24 hours a day. They have to be signed appropriately, so folks can find these spaces. They can't be hidden. The spaces may be onsite, they may be offsite, or mixture of all the, of the above. But if they go offsite, we have limited the areas for which they can go offsite to provide these spaces. The next bullet is critical. There will not be a charge for public parking. There's never been a charge for public parking. There's not going to be a charge for public parking here. That's part of the public shared parking program. We do not charge on the public shared parking program. So this is the area of the downtown. It's a little hard to see, a little fuzzy. I'll orient you a little bit. You have the municipal center, or are we here? Up here. You have the current site of the development down here. So that is the area in which they can try to piecemeal together 162 spaces, provided we agree with their plan, when it comes to that point. Art center relocation. We are putting aside $250,000 for us to live up to our commitments to having art space on town property. We're going to work with Comstock to find a suitable location to move art space while this construction goes on. The relocation allowance includes things such as relocation of the existing art space, moving them to the new location, anything pertaining to preparing that location and leasing that location, and any rent and common maintenance charges are included in this $250,000. The interior of the art center. The RFP laid out the art center as an unfinished shell. What does this mean? That means, pretty much, you have the exterior, some rudimentary interior infrastructure related items, but other than that, it's unfinished. The interior design and build-out will be left to the town. But we've built into this agreement an option for Comstock to provide us both the design and the construction, or either/or, or we can go procure either/or ourselves to fit out the art center. When we do exercise this option, if we do choose Comstock to design and build, it will be a guaranteed maximum price contract. be a guaranteed maximum price contract to do so. So we're going to have an art center that's going to have some commercial elements in it, some residential elements, I think, above it. You're going to have the parking garage that's going to be split between both parties. So these have to be divided some way under the law for us to both claim ownership to that same building and piece of land. And the only way for us to have done that is to establish a condominium regimen. So this will operate as a condominium. The condominium documents that we negotiated do provide protections to the town. There are conditions, the conveyance of both the art center and parking spaces to us. And this was an interesting element. As I said earlier, this was a commercial entity trying to make a deal with a governmental entity. We're covered differently under the constitution than Virginia. We, we could not build into the condominium regimen anything that would compel a future council to pay the condominium fees. They would have to do it. We can't tell them to do it. That's got to be voluntary for the council to pay those fees. We can also, another way in which we compel folks who own condominiums to pay their fees is to put a lien on the property when they don't. The constitution of Virginia does not allow us to lien property against governments. So we had to come up with a unique, creative way for us to satisfy the, us being compelled to pay our condominium fees. This is the only time at any one of these documents where you will ever see the term paid parking. They can establish if we are, if we do not pay our condominium fees, they can establish paid parking in the public shared portion of it to recoup the condominium fees. Now, let's bear in mind for a second, let's talk, let's take a step back and think about this. If the town isn't paying its condominium fees, what other bills aren't we paying? This is kind of an apocalyptic vision of, of the world. This is something that is so remote, it, it did not even see, it didn't even blink an eye to, to put this provision in because it will never be exercised. We have always paid our bills. We always will pay our bills. If we're not paying our bills, I'm not their town manager. I, I don't know what to tell you. But that is the only place you'll see that. We are committed to free parking in the garage. As I said at the outset, this parking garage has 761 spaces. 339 of them will operate as a public shared parking unit. This includes 220 public shared parking spaces up from 162. We'll add 60 additional spaces for the art center, 59 additional spaces for the retail that we're putting in there. It will operate continuously. It will operate as a free public parking to those folks that want to come into the downtown and park there. Once you get above that 330, the remaining spaces will be allotted for, for the residential use that will be also on the same area. The condominium operations, we will, we will have a seat on the board of directors. There are restrictions built in the documents that as long as we own that garage, as long as the town owns the art center, that they cannot, that there's restrictions on what the condominium association can do to our properties while, while the town owns them. The condominium association will operate the entire garage. It will operate all these public spaces in there as well, and it'll be handled professionally. So let's get to the bottom lines here. The town's financial obligations under this agreement. The town will spend $3.6 million to Comstock during construction. This includes, again, our responsibility to clean up our, our portion of this site, $500,000. This includes living up to our, our parking obligations that we have to our downtown businesses, another $500,000. This includes relocating the art center and repairing the culvert if we find damage. If damage is the result of Comstock doing it, they're responsible for their damage, but this is existing damage to that culvert. If these budget amounts are exceeded, the town is still responsible for their responsibilities. We will have to pay above these amounts if we go above them. If it goes below, Comstock retains. We believe, we believe this gave Comstock some fiscal, some fiscal discipline, a profit motive to keep these costs under control and keep us capped out at these numbers so we don't exceed these numbers. I said earlier, we're responsible for offsite easements. We've done several series of analyses. We can't exactly identify what those offsite easements will be. That said, we still weren't comfortable with an open-ended agreement on that either. So for the first $50,000 of offsite easements, the town will pay. The next $100,000, we will split 50/50 with Comstock. If we go above $150,000 for these easements, Comstock will pay. So that puts our easement cap at $100,000. So as you look at this, this is what we're giving up. We have bought this land for $5.8 million. We're giving up $3.6 million in cash investment for a total of $9.2 million invested in town cash into this project. The additional capital costs, this, this was the art center fit up. Our best estimates are 2.5 to 3.5 million to fit that building up to where it needs to be. Now, what have we done outside of here? We've gone out and we've secured a Virginia Brownfields grant to help us with the environmental cleanup, $109,000. We've just finished having a series of meetings with the Fairfax County Staff and Board of Supervisors for an Economic Development Support Fund grant of $1.2 million from the county. This is subject to an MOU. This is subject to the board approving the MOU once it is completed, but the board did direct staff to write the MOU with our staff. So this is moving forward. What are we getting? 339 structured parking spaces are worth $7.1 million. The art center shell is a $2.5 million shell. The public improvements, Arts Walk, et cetera, is another $3.5 million in improvements. We also, under the proffers, are getting a $500,000 recreation proffer back for a total return to the town of $13.6 million in assets. The 10-year projection of town tax revenues over that period is an additional $3 million. It's actually more than $3 million. Because if you think about it, what you have there is you have a large 4.75 acre plot of land owned by a government. It can't be taxed. It will now be a taxable entity out there. So that's where we're drawing that from. Also, if we put some restaurants in there, maybe we have a meals tax. Bee pole taxes are also built into these projections. That being said, again, this, a lot of money here for the town. Going in, going out, and coming back. So we needed to address some risks. Going back to, we had to deal with as many risks as we could practically could. So number one, we have a parent guarantee from Comstock, Comstock Corporate, not Comstock Herndon, the parent company of Comstock Herndon, is giving us a $5 million guarantee to perform this, once we close, to perform this work. Obviously, we talked about payment and performance bonds of the general contractors. That's pretty standard. Comstock insurance on the contractor and architect, that's pretty standard. That 162 space parking easement, that is a very large element that we can, we're giving up this land and 162 spaces. It ensures us that we will have at least 162 spaces when we're done. The right of reentry, the recordation of memory, of the memorandum of comprehensive agreement, which again, I'll say, means that whoever gets this property should Comstock default, will have to live up to the elements of the comprehensive agreement. They will have to build what we want them to build. This last thing is, is something that is also very powerful. We're conveying the land at the time of closing. That $3.6 million, we don't write that check at the time of closing. We hold the $3.6 million until Comstock makes their first draw from their lender. So after they are in, they are into this construction, and they make their first draw from the bank, we will then get our first installment check, or I'm sorry, installment bill against that 300, $3.6 million. And we will pay installments until substantial completion. So this is no lump sum. It has graduated over time. Once Comstock is completely committed to this project, then our cash starts going into this. If this agreement's adopted, what are we looking at? What is the schedule going to look like? When can you see shovels? Well, the schematic designs will start in first quarter of 2018, so that's somewhere around January to March timeframe. They'll start doing their designs. Site plan review will take place as, as those designs are coming in up through the third quarter of 2018. HPRB will start getting their looks at this in the second and third quarter of 2018. We should, they should be in trying to getting, trying to draw their building permits in the first quarter of 2019. We're looking at groundbreaking in the second quarter, April timeframe of 2019. If everything goes as planned, that's what we're looking at. It's a 440-day, roughly length of construction, so we're looking at the first quarter of 2021 when this development will be complete. Should council adopt this agreement, the next step will be executing it. Putting pen to paper, having the mayor sign the agreement, Comstock sign the agreement, setting up a pre-application meeting, starting to work towards preparing those schematic designs and site plan documents will be the next thing that's going to be on our agendas. As I said at the outset, this is a 30-year-in-the-making initiative. A lot of hard work and a lot of very creative minds sitting in a room came to an agreement that I don't think either party got everything they wanted, but I think both parties are fairly satisfied with what they, what they've got. It was really telling to me at points during the negotiations, when it dragged on and dog days were kicking in and we weren't making any movement at all, that I could talk to my counterpart of Comstock about the vibrancy of that development. And to have them also buying into that same vision, that they wanted to have an energetic, vibrant downtown for Herndon as much as we wanted to have an energetic, vibrant downtown Herndon, and it helped break down and clear up some of the log jams we were having at various points. I think ultimately, that's the most critical element to this. This document, Madam Mayor, is just a means to get us to that development. This is just one more step moving us closer to it. And as I would, as I said in my staff report, so I therefore recommend from the staff wholeheartedly that you can take public testimony, you consider, and staff recommends approval of entering into this agreement. I'm right, I'm available for your questions.
Thank you very much. Council, questions for staff? Or we also have our legal team and everybody that was involved in this here. So questions from the council. Ms. Friedrichs?
I have two questions. First of all, what is the total cost of this project from Comstock's point of view?
That is still proprietary information to them.
Okay.
So I, we, I really can't disclose that. That, that would be on them.
That's fine. Well, that takes out my other questions.
Two for one.
Thank you. Other questions from council? Mr. McKenna?
Yeah, I just have, it's been brought to my attention several times in regards to traffic studies and things of that nature. Have, you know, have they been completed? Any Monte Carlo simulations based upon what would happen on that?
I will yield to Lisa Gillarone, who has information on our traffic analysis.
Yeah, and I had a question about traffic too, so I'll throw mine in in case you can get it in one shot. That's something we've heard a lot about. You know, how much traffic is this going to cause? Are we ready for it? What about Eldon Street? It gets backed up at certain times of day. And I know we also have another big project for improving Eldon Street further down near where the Kmart Center is toward Fairfax County Parkway and how that might impact some of this as well. Thank you.
To address some of the existing conditions at this point, right now, of course, we're under construction and will be when Center Street intersection is improved as well. The arrangement of lanes that you currently have at Eldon and Station Street, that will be changing. There will in fact be a left turn lane for eastbound Eldon in the future. Right now, because of the construction, it's a shared lane. But what will be happening is the westbound lane will be moving over closer to the curb, and there will be a turn lane. So that will help.
This is the intersection right in front of Jimmy's and Old Town Hall, just to be clear. Okay, thank you.
So that will help to alleviate some of the backups we're having as construction is going on. Concerning a traffic impact study, although one was not required to be done during the early stages of comparing the proposals that we received under the PPEA, the town council did request that the staff hire a consultant to do a traffic impact study. They did that study, and I don't remember the modeling system they used for it, but it was an independent consultant that the town hired. And they looked at it, and the intersections will all operate within the level of service for overall intersection operation that is recommended or approved by the comprehensive plan, which is a level of service D for overall.
Additional questions?
Let me get, can I come back?
Sure, I can come back. Sure, Vice Mayor. So I know there was a lot of questions about parking at the town hall, and your presentation reminded me, I have another parking question myself. So when you talk about the 162, the shared parking spaces that we of course have an agreement with our downtown businesses for those, there's of course other public shared parking spaces.
Yes.
So you're only, when you talk about 162, it's only the space that is taking up by that 4.7 square acres that we're talking about?
That is correct. The rest of the public share parking spaces are like the James Building Lot and the other ones. Now, bearing in mind that, that those still exist, and they'll continue to exist. Those are not going to be available for Comstock to try to negotiate with us to use that. That's double counting. We're not going to do that. So those, those spaces will still exist, the same number of public share parking spaces we have today, will have during the development.
Right.
And we will exceed it once we convey back the parking garage.
Exactly. Okay. And then you talked about, and of course, we will have 339, but I know, and really, our public shared spaces will go up from 162 to 220 for that particular land space, not to mention the additional parking for arts and retail. But you mentioned the 162 would be worst-case scenario if anything happened with the development. Okay, that we would only be secure the 162.
Right. And, and the reason being is then we're not out what we are today.
Yeah.
So that, and that was the spirit behind that, that putting that into the land record is we'd have that easement there to make sure that we are no worse off. Once we convey that land away, that we would still have the right to have 162 spaces there in the future should something unforeseen happen.
Right. But of course, the goal is we're increasing our parking.
Correct.
Right, and partly funded by our meals tax.
Correct.
That space.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Other questions from council? Ms. Cunningham?
Just to kind of continue on the, the parking riff, one of the questions we brought up during the work sessions was the concern of parking creep into the immediately adjacent residential neighborhoods. And can you talk a little bit for everyone's benefit about what are the tools that the immediately adjacent neighborhoods can do to manage that parking creep and how we, as a town government, are going to assist with that? Because we, there are going to be ebbs and flows in cars. And sometimes there could be a lot of cars, sometimes there aren't going to be that many cars. And I know that the neighborhoods are concerned with that. We do see overflow parking on our special occasions like the Herndon Festival or Friday Night Live. And, and neighbors are fine with that because it's periodic as opposed to ongoing. So if you could talk a little bit about that, that'd be super.
Well, there are a couple of ways we can, we can attack this problem. Number one is we've been spending a lot of time working on the parking chapter of our, of our ordinance. Unfortunately, public streets are public streets and VDOT and the state law mandates that they are able to be publicly parked. That being said, there are some provisions for us to do residential parking permit programs depending on if you meet certain requirements. That's outlined in the code. And if we start seeing that in certain neighborhoods, I can certainly have, start having conversations with those neighbors about what we can do on that front. As far as the creep coming out of the garage, like, so let's say you have the apartment elements starting to park on streets. Just want to make sure it wasn't mine.
It's not for you.
Mine's still over there. No, it's by the time my son gets home from football practice, so I was expecting a call. No, but, but we'll, we'll work with Comstock on that question. How we can try to incent their residents to stay in their spaces and their garage. Their visitors will be eligible to park in the public share parking elements here, the 330. But the residents, we want to make sure we keep them in the residential area of this, of this garage. And I think part of it is security. I mean, they're going to have to put up some, some sort of security there to segment those two elements of the garage. You know, your car will probably be more secure up there. That's an incentive to, That's an incentive to have them park up there. As far as other ways, you know, we will work with Comstock as the problems arise, and we've, like, we have done a little bit on this matter in the conversations, but not nearly enough, but that will be as we move forward. And for those Comstock people that are here listening, I told you I was serious about parking. This is, this is a big deal. So, anyway.
Was that your only question, Ms. Cunningham? Okay. Mr. McKenna?
Just is there implementation in place outside the agreement for businesses and the residents that are affected in this zone to be proactive through community, our community development office or something, to let them know as stages are going forward, will they be, will there be communications in regards to that so there's no surprises?
One of the things that we're going to do, that we committed to at the very outset of this, I still remember when Art was on his way out and we were talking about how we are going to absorb this development in, from a staff perspective. We have always envisioned that there would be a project manager that the, that the town would hire. Now, I'm presuming it's probably going to be a contract, not a full-time employee since it's a short term, and we're going to need some special skill sets involved, but that person will run point on the elements of the development. That person would certainly be a person that I think we could put out, at least working with our public information office, to get information out and also to work with the communities when they have problems and problems arise. Get them to my attention so we can start dealing with them.
Thank you. Any other questions from our council members?
I had a couple of questions. My colleagues have already hit a couple of them. One of the things that, overall, our commentary has been very positive, but something that does come up a lot is parking, obviously, that we've talked about. And one comment really struck me from a resident and said, "I expect the overall result from the downtown project will be positive for the town, but I urge the town's leaders to maintain careful and consistent financial oversight as the redevelopment proceeds." And I just want to ask the question publicly, like, do we, how are we doing that?
How are we doing that?
I know that we are, but that is very important to our residents.
It's a very good question, and I'll bring Jenny up to color in. I'm going to give, like, Rod based, and she's going to actually put the finer points on this because she knows it much better than I do. We have bonding capacity, debt service capacity built into our current budget. We presume that in this budget, we would have to write a very large check at some point, which we're not going to have to do, but we built the capacity to service debt into this budget. So at that point, debt service for what this would cost is already baked into our fiscal cake, year-by-year operating fiscal cake. Second thing is our, our current, in conversations with Davenport, who we brought in as our financial consultant, they have pointed out that we are uniquely positioned because we have paid off a lot of debt in recent years and not incurred any new debt in many years. So we are opening up, we have bonding capacity out there for us to then absorb. We have a very large undesignated fund balance. It's 28% of the general fund revenues right now. I would not ever advise you going beneath 20%, but there's 8% out there that if we wanted to do something in the interim with that 8%, we could probably do that. We have Davenport looking at that exact question. How are we going to mix cash we have with bonding? And we've built already the debt service for all of that bonding into our current fiscal cake. So under our current tax rates, under what we're currently bringing in today, we have the, we have the capacity to pay off the debt we would need to do this project. Do you have anything else to add, Jenny? See, you taught me well.
Okay, thank you for that. What else was I going to ask you? Assuming this goes forward and the project is built out, what does the town actually own at the end of this project? Like, what parts of it belong to the town?
We will own 339 parking spaces in that garage as a condominium. We will own 18,000 square feet of an art center as a condominium. The Arts Walk is considered a common element, so we don't own the Arts Walk, but it is a common element to the entire development, but we will get that Arts Walk built the way we want it built to then function as a promenade for the entire, the energy of the entire development.
That's an improvement, but that piece won't belong to the town.
That will not belong, titled to the town, it would not, it would not be titled to the town.
Okay. Okay, and that was that one? I loved your apocalyptic comment about paid parking, because it was kind of funny in the town hall, a lot of you were there, but some of you weren't, and everybody was talking about what's happened across Fairfax County Parkway with their paid program, and we certainly don't want to find ourselves in those shoes. So it was interesting to note, though, because that was something, I think, when the, we went to our, the work session, every one of us had that circled in the agreement. What do you mean paid parking? So I-
It's just a stick, so you pay your bills.
Exactly.
Yep.
And so total, we will be investing $9.4 million invested in the land transaction and cash.
Correct.
And our total return, which is the public parking, the art center shell, and the public space improvements, which we don't own, plus a half-million-dollar recreational proffer? I didn't know about that.
Yes.
I don't, I'm sure it was in there, I didn't remember that. That's great. So that, just to be sure I have it right, the total return on the outset is 13.6 million.
That is correct. And also, if you just want to take a second to look at the one, or the 3.6, 1.3 of that truly is us living up to obligations during this development. Yeah, so it's just us operating to get this development done, taking care of the things we need to take care of, our environmental, our parking, art center, our culvert, those are all things that we are committed to, and we are spending 1.3 million dollars during the course of this development, the two years it's going to develop, to live up to our obligations, and the rest of it will be cash.
And my last question is about the easements, which is kind of small in the grand scheme of things, but we're allowed up to $150,000, not all of that is on the town, but we're not even sure we need any easements, is that correct?
Correct.
Could be that there are none.
It was, Comstock couldn't give us examples of what they might need. We ran it by Dana Singer, and she took a look at it. Do you want, care to comment?
I guess that's a yes, I'd be happy to comment. Yeah, we try to understand possible easements, but it is possible that there's a utility that may arrange itself in an odd way and may not be able to service the property and may need a small off-site easement or easement on an adjacent property, which we can't envision right now, but that would be something that's a small possibility. They have told us verbally they mean to accommodate all utilities on-site, so again, I think it's just something we don't anticipate happening.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from my colleagues before we go on? Is there any more that you have to add or that any of our team is planning to add?
Folks?
Look, look how excited they are.
I'm thrilled.
I just want to make sure that everybody has a chance before we open up.
If I could just add, it was truly an honor to work with those people sitting at these front two, these front two pews, because they are truly experts in their fields, and it came, it truly bore out during these negotiations just how good they are at what they do, and I thank them.
Dennis pointed out, I want to clarify just one thing about the Arts Walk.
Sure.
Over there.
Wherever you want to go.
Go either one.
The condominium common elements such as the Arts Walk, the town owns a share of those, just like any other of the condominium unit owners, so it's not that-
We don't own them at all, it's just as, as part of the condominium regime.
Gotcha.
We have an undivided interest in it along with Comstock as the owner of the apartment units.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, sir. Last chance for questions, guys? Okay, thank you very much. Well, this is a public hearing, obviously, and I anticipate that we have many, many people that would like to come forward and speak on this this evening, so the, the situation is the same as before. You have up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, and since there is such a crowd, I'm going to have to be really strict, so when the red light comes on, I'm going to ask you to wrap up. So who would like to come forward and speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Riyad Nazal. I live at 126 Pearl Street, and I'm a co-owner of a business at 785 Station Street. As a downtown-adjacent resident and downtown business owner, just wanted to express my gratitude for all the work that you guys have performed on this and express my full support for this agreement, and I encourage the council to sign it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Who else would like to come down? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Jana Shoup. I live at 731 Old Hunt Way. I just want to say this is a very exciting opportunity. We're thankful as a town to have this opportunity to hear about the presentation and its potential. The questions I have is regarding the parking. Obviously, with all the businesses, there are going to be a lot of employees coming down that might not live locally and be able to walk or take public transportation, so I was wondering where those employees, what parking spots would be designated for them? And also, I was wondering what the estimation is or impact on schools. Obviously, probably a lot of families are going to be moving in, a lot of young children. Do we know that the schools can accommodate the growth that, that will be coming with the new families? And, and can you just talk to how that impact might evolve?
Okay, yes, thank you. Who else would like to come forward? Yes, sir, Mr. Munt.
Hi, Steve Munt, 814 Locust Street. I still live there, my wife hasn't thrown me out.
Not, not yet, there's still time.
Only got three minutes. I want to make this quick. I'm happy that we're finally developing the downtown area. However, one, I would caution the design, you know, we're in the historic district of downtown Herndon, okay? And if you look at what we've done up by the other shopping center, I don't know how that exactly fits in the theme of the historic downtown, but I would caution us to take a hard look at that as we go forward, particularly as close as this is to so many historic sites. Second, traffic is still a concern. I understand. You know, we've done a study. I, at some point, as a citizen, would like to see the study. What we're talking about is traffic that is going to be pushed out onto Vine and on the Locust. We've got two schools there, a lot of small kids. Now you're going to have extra parking out there because parking is being pushed over there, kids jarting in and out of cars. I'm concerned. I'm not sure we've really addressed the traffic thing yet. Parking spaces, I got it, we're working it, we're looking at it, but for those residents, we do take up a lot of parking, and we have a lot of out-of-town folks, to include out-of-town work vehicles that park in the adjacent neighborhoods right now, since we did away with our Herndon stickers and have no way to enforce that. Three, stoplights right now currently under this traffic plan, I haven't heard anything, but they are not synchronized. I mean, if you do the speed limit and you started a stoplight and you're the first one there, you should be able to go through the rest of the stoplights. You can't do that right now down Eldon Street. I understand we don't own the promenade, it was kind, a promenade, it was kind of discussed a little bit, but who ultimately has responsibility for maintaining that? The apocalyptic venue that we talked about, I would caution you, every time I hear somebody say it can't happen, that's exactly what the US Congress told us about the Affordable Care Act and the Budget Control Act. Okay, so don't dismiss that. Off-site easements, you know, you're never going to need one, we can't imagine that, I couldn't either. Everybody told me the easement for your utilities, don't worry about it, it'll never happen, we're going to straighten out Locust, I mean, Center Street, yep, straighten it out, put the telephone poles right in my yard, so you need the money there, I applaud that. And so, anything else, I will think up and put in writing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Who would like to come down next? Yes, ma'am.
Penny Halpern, 932 Eldon Street. 281 apartments. I would have, I would hope that you would consider setting some aside for low-income apartment rentals are, can get out of sight. With Metro coming, they're even going to go higher. And where do our public servants live? They probably won't be able to afford rental in Herndon unless you set aside some for the people at an affordable rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to come forward? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Peggy O'Reilly. I live at 903 Station Street. As a disclaimer, I serve on the Board of Arts Herndon, but I'm here to speak as a resident of the downtown area. First of all, I want to commend the members of the town council for having both the vision and the political will to move this project forward. It has been, as the town manager indicated, decades in the making, and we're proceeding after groundwork that was laid by very many people over that time period. As a town resident within walking distance of the downtown development and as a supporter of the arts, I'm delighted that the town has kept at the center of the downtown plan this vibrant and exciting vision for a center for the arts in Herndon. I want to say a few words about the economic impact of the arts. Any business, obviously, has some economic impact, but what makes the impact of arts and cultural organizations different and unique is that unlike many other industries, they induce a lot of event-related spending on other businesses in the town by the audiences. For example, when patrons attend an arts event, they may stop for dinner before, they may have dessert after, they may go home and pay the babysitter, economic incentive for some of our young people. The ability of the art center to attract visitors to the downtown area who will then extend their visit and participate in other of Herndon's many activities will have a positive and measurable impact on our economy over and above its impact as just another downtown business. And that is to say, an art center is both a business and it performs a public service. The art center will contribute to the town's identity, its unique cultural fabric, and its quality of life. As an example, a recent study of the economic impact of the Torpedo Arts Center in Old Town Alexandria found that 75% of the visitors to the torpedo factory were from outside the city of Alexandria. 49% of those visitors gave the Torpedo Art Center as the main reason for their visit to Old Town Alexandria. 96% of those visitors planned to patronize other businesses in Old Town, primarily restaurants and shops. The point is, the art center will provide a focal point for downtown. It will attract people not only from Herndon but from other, from other places outside of Herndon to spend time in our downtown area. It will make the residents in the downtown more attractive to potential homeowners and apartment renters and greatly enhance the quality of life for all of our residents. I want to thank you for pursuing this, and I look forward to realizing our shared vision for the art center in downtown.
Thank you, ma'am. Who else would like to come forward? Yes, sir.
My name is Chris Renner. I'm president of 11302 Westbrook Mill Lane in Action Fairfax, frequent visitor to Herndon. I regularly ride the WNOD trail and love to stop here to patronize local businesses. Want to respect all the hard work that the town manager and the Comstock has put into this. That being said, I would urge council to pause and to think carefully about developing this as a single large parcel of 4.675 acres. I think that a lot, one of the things that makes Herndon's downtown really awesome is that you have a lot of really, a lot of small traditional businesses that are built on land that's approximately 1/8 of an acre parcels each, and that is, it seems to me that redeveloping and selling some of the land in parcels that are about that size would be, both aesthetically and financially, a better result for downtown Herndon's redevelopment. I've got, I'm happy to illustrate this, I've got some figure, I've got some specific properties that I've calculated the fair market value of, and I can show this, I'm happy to, happy to supply that information to you or to anyone else here who is interested.
Sure, if you could provide that to the town clerk, we could definitely distribute that to council and make it available.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Who else would like to come forward? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Joe Plummer. I live at 626 Center Street. I'm on the board of the Herndon Environmental Network. I'm also a member of the town's newly-created Sustainability Committee, and I'm the director of TEDx Herndon. And I just want to say that I'm very much looking forward to having future TEDx Herndon events at the art center, and I also want to connect this development to the town's sustainability identity. As sustainability is one of the pillars of the town's 2035 vision, I think it is important for us to not only highlight the financial benefits of this development, but also the environmental benefits. Because of this development, there will be a significant net reduction in average greenhouse gas emissions per resident and green, average greenhouse gas emissions per dollar of economic activity in the town of Herndon, mostly due to the density and walkability of this development. Furthermore, I think there's an opportunity with the arrival of the metro to coordinate appropriate mass transit connections between the Herndon stations and the new thriving downtown, which could also lead to significant reductions in greenhouse gas emissions. All of that being said, I'm glad this development is moving forward, and I look forward to its completion in the near future. Thank you to the town council and the town staff for your continued efforts to make the 2035 vision a reality.
Thank you, sir. Who else would like to come forward? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, town council members. I would like to say thank you for your motivation and innovation to the town project. I'm hoping that we can kind of capitalize on this momentum and hopefully this kind of cross-pollinates to the HPRB guidelines as well. Since we are modernizing the downtown, it would also be nice to review and update the HPRB guidelines. guidelines as well.
Thank you. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Sorry, Josh Westfall, 40 Eldon Street.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your comments. Yes, sir, come on down. Nice shirt, too. Guns N' Roses, if you can see it. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Andrew Oden. I'm at 128 Anthem Avenue. Three quick points I'd like to make. Number one, I hundred percent support this agreement. Number two, I'd like to thank the town council and the mayor for completing this complex deal such a short amount of time while reducing risk. And lastly, number three, with, I don't really see any major showstoppers. There's a lot of noise out there, and there will be problems, but I encourage everyone to work through those problems pretty quickly so that we keep the overall timeline. And I didn't notice that there was a good dispute process in place so that we could resolve some of these issues quickly, when they do happen. So, in closing, just like to say, in a few years, I hope to take my six-month-old son to downtown Herndon and my wife out to dinner and to a theater. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who else would like to come forward? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Mary Pauline Jones. I live at 1102 Cypress Street Place, and I do support the project. I just have one note mainly. I sit on the Fairfax County Disability Services Board, and unfortunately, there's a number of government projects in the county where ADA requirements are not met during the process of the building, and retrofitting it after the fact tends to cost a lot more. So, just, I would recommend that we meet with someone to ensure that all of those requirements are met from the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to come forward? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Michael O'Reilly. My office address is 761 Monroe Street. I'm here tonight as an individual resident of the town of Herndon, as the owner of a small business in the town of Herndon, as the president of Arts Herndon, and as a co-chair of the Herndon Committee of the Dulles Regional Chamber. And from all four of those roles, I want to say congratulations to the council for the work that you've done in getting this comprehensive agreement before the public. I want to congratulate the team that you had assembled that did a great job in putting the whole thing together. There may be some issues with regard to parking, and the people in the chamber are going to be watching carefully how the project is built out. You know some of the names of some of those people who are going to be calling and sending you emails. And we're going to do our best to work with the development team to make sure that the parking is good. Working with the arts community, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the town, for our arts organizations, and we look forward to having a successful, vibrant, and active arts center in our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who would like to come down next? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. John Boylan, 14449 North Slope Street. I'm also the president and CEO for the Chamber of Commerce. This morning, I attended a breakfast that talked about autonomous vehicles. The way that we're going to change with our vehicles unmanned autonomy will be significant. Does anybody have a cellphone? They're only ten years old. Think about how quick the technology is going to be. Self-parking cars are not science fiction. It's real. I think we'll be looking at Bill and saying, why'd you have so many parking spots? So, I've worked in the Air Force, looking at the future, figuring out how do we use autonomous vehicles to fly. I've spent some time helping Herndon to look at the future for vehicles. What I think will happen is communications. I think, I really appreciate what Bill's been able to do in leading this team, certainly the council has been great with the, with the chamber. The chamber not only represents businesses, there are a number of not-for-profits, and so we're really excited about the vibrancy and what it will bring to the whole community, and we strongly support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who would like to come down next? Yes, ma'am. Oh, sorry. Trying to watch for people hiding over on the side, making sure I'm seeing everybody.
Hi, my name is Janice Chartoff. I live at 105 Fort Knightly Boulevard, and I'm very excited about the project as well. I just have two questions, wondering what's going to happen to the Herndon Festival and where is Elvis going to buy his Christmas trees?
I was thinking Elvis was going to show up tonight to ask about that. Thank you very much. We will address that. Yes, sir, come on down, followed by Ms. Glakis.
I'm Alex Rodriguez. I live at 400 Spuce Court here in Herndon, and I want to commend you on this job. I've worked as a developer for over twenty years of my life, developed more housing than you're developing here and more commercial space in Boston. As a chairman of the Economic Development Corporation nonprofit, I wrestled with City Hall. I have to commend you and your staff on the job you've done. I dug into this project about three weeks ago online and looking at a lot of stuff. And what I have to say is, if I were the Comstock people, I would have walked away. I mean, you're overly cautious, you've got a lot of protect-
Don't listen to that, Comstock.
I mean, I would not have committed to this. The cautions on these are amazing, and what you got back is amazing, you know? It doesn't happen that way often. And I feel that as a citizen in this town, we're protected. You know, I, I was the first LOPE fellow at Harvard School of Design, and I taught at MIT. I know about this stuff, and you've got a great deal here. And my only caution has already been spoken by one other person here. You're going to have some eighteen-hundred people attracted just by the two-hundred-and-sixty-one units to this part of town. They'll be parking, they'll be moving around. Six degrees of separation just tells you, as I've learned since I've moved to this town, that people come and see Herndon, and they say, oh, my God. And you got it for, and, oh, my God. And they move in. And the problem with that is it puts pressure on rents. It puts pressure on housing costs. So, you really have to start thinking about affordable housing. You know, who's going to fix your roof? Who's going to cut your grass? Who's going to work at McDonald's? You know, who's going to babysit? Who's going to teach in your schools? Who's going to be your Friday Fridays? You've got to make it affordable, because there will be a secondary and tertiary spinoff from this project, and you have time to do that. But I commend you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Glakis.
Evening, Madam Mayor, town council members. I'm Barbara Glakis, 935 Barton Oaks Place. I fully support the contract for this downtown agreement, and I hope you'll vote to pass it tonight. I'm particularly glad to know that we'll ultimately, ultimately be getting back a lot of parking spaces, more than we have in our municipal lot now, although I'm sure we'll all have to be patient during the construction period. I also hope we can work towards getting the D-traffic level of service up to a C-level of service. I'd like to make a couple of quick recommendations. As you know, I've always, I've always thought it was important for us to protect and expand our public space. Our town green is the social and cultural center of our town where people gather and many of our significant town events occur. Some of our events that occur now are already crowded in this space, and I believe it's very important that we plan to either, to expand either our physical or visual access to that space. So, looking at this map right here, so here's our town green, this building right here is positioned correctly because the opening of the V right here is pointing towards the town green, which allows the people who live in that building visual access to the activities going on in the town green. Right here is the, the proposed overpass or the cut-through that will go from the Arts Walk across. It's marked proposed, I assume, because this land belongs, across the trail, belongs to Northern Virginia Regional Park Authority and not to the town. So, my hope is the town or the developer will ensure that negotiations with the Park Authority are held to obtain those permissions, because this access is vital to connect our town green to the Arts Walk, which will act as an extension of our public space. Over here is the proposed arts building. So, I'm not sure of the architectural details that are planned for this building right now, but I would like to suggest that you consider that its roof be constructed as a green, usable patio space. Making the roof a usable space would add to the success of the arts facility, as it would attract people into the building. It would also be good for additional lead certification, but most importantly, it would be great for the town residents, because it would be a usable patio roof that is located adjacent to the trail that could act as a visual extension of our town's public space, where people can sit and watch and listen to the events that are occurring on the town green, as well as other areas around our downtown core. So, again, I support this plan. It's been decades in the making. Thank you so much for your leadership in finally bringing this part of our downtown master plan to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to come down and speak next? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Brenda Wickman, 925 Vine Street. I'm here to tell you, I've been here twenty-two years in Herndon. This will have an immediate impact on my life. It will cut off my favorite cut-through through downtown as I go to work in the mornings, but I'm happy to sacrifice that. I think this is a fantastic opportunity for our town. One of the things that I really love about this project is that it's being developed as a whole, the comprehensive idea of it. Some of you may recall, a few years ago, there were ideas about putting an apartment building where the Vine Haven development is. It's the only other time I've stood at this podium to tell you I thought that was a terrible idea. I thought it was terrible because I thought it abutted historic homes, and I didn't like the transition. I think the transition from this development through Vine Haven toward my neighborhood, frankly, is a much smoother, better, appropriate one, and I think it'll bring a great attractive quality to downtown. So, I encourage you to adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to come forward and speak? Oh, hi, couldn't see you there. Come on down.
My name is Megan Galardo. I am part of the new Vine Haven neighborhood. I'm at 802 Vine Street. I encourage you to adopt this plan. I'm so excited to be part of Herndon, the Herndon community, as this is coming to fruition. It's going to be such a vibrancy to the downtown, and I'm even more thrilled that the sort of, the center point of this plan is the arts, and I'm looking forward to being able to go and see plays with my husband, just as my kids are getting to the age to be able to stay home by themselves. So, the timing is fantastic.
It's great, let me tell you.
So, I encourage you all to, to do what you need to do to get this going, and I look forward to maybe not so much the construction phase, but to enjoying the, the after the effects. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Who else would like to come down? Yes, ma'am.
Erin Wolf, 510 Florida Avenue, apartment 202. I've lived in Herndon for more than twenty years. I grew up here. It was a great place to grow up. It's still a really great place to be. There's nowhere in Northern Virginia that has the kind of feel that Herndon does, and I would really like to be able to stay. But unfortunately, there is a serious dearth of the kind of housing that I and other people in my age range need. Herndon does not have a lot of good-quality apartments. It does not have a lot of one- and two-bedroom condos. And so, I strongly support this project to increase the diversity of housing in Herndon and give more options to people who, like me, grew up here and want to stay here, but honestly, have no possibility of affording a five-bedroom, $500,000 house anytime soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to come forward? Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Yes, sir. I knew there was someone else out there.
Madam Mayor, council, Jeff Wickman, 925 Vine Street. Would like to commend the town council and the town manager and the staff and the team that negotiated this. I think, as others have said, we've really taken great steps to protect ourselves in this investment, so I'm very confident that the town protect, that the town's interests are protected. I also commend the focus on there being an arts center here. I've performed in art space. My kids have performed in art space, and it's a great little space, but our town's growing, and it's more of a exhibit area than it is really a performance space. So, I'm really looking forward to adding not only just the performance space but also multipurpose rooms, areas, and then having the whole focus of the Arts Walk really just another great asset to the town. Four-point-two square miles, we've got a golf course, wonderful town green, community center, new soccer fields, and now this gem. So, I recommend you approve the project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who else would like to come forward and speak? Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on this Go in once? Okay. Thank you very much.
I will close the public hearing, move to council level for discussion and action. To remind you, we are doing two separate motions this evening. Ms. Wolf.
Madam Mayor, I'll move Resolution 17G85.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve made by Councilmember Cunningham, seconded by Councilmember Olem, and this is the motion on Resolution 17G85 to approve the comprehensive agreement between the town of Herndon and Comstock Herndon Venture LC. Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you. It's been a long time in the making. As the town manager mentioned, it's the product of thirty years of charrettes, countless hours and weeks of citizen input over the decades, a lot of scrutiny by our internal, external lawyers, a lot of scrutiny by this council, this staff, and I really think that this is a community proposal that really reflects what this community wants to see in its downtown. I think our staff and our attorneys, thank you for doing a fabulous job in protecting our interests. The legal contortions they had to go through and make us understand what they had to go through was significant, so thank you. And I'm very excited that we are finally bringing this project to fruition. It's going to be one of those projects that transforms Herndon in a way that is positive, that returns investment, that is sustainable, that builds community, and that keeps Herndon the kind of hometown we'd all like to live in, grow up, and raise families in. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Olem.
Yes, I wholeheartedly support this, as well as pull these things off of my speaker. We've got lots of comments from people. Some people had questions, very detailed, was very happy to see the input that we got and the input that we've had here tonight. This, this will be a in-the-works kind of project, and I know the parking will be something that we will constantly be working on, but I have faith with our new staff, with parking enforcement is going to be helped not just in the downtown but town-wide, which is how we were able to hire that individual. And the growing pains, if you've ever lived in a neighborhood where they built even a new house, much less something of this size, there will be growing pains. Just a few years ago, when we were putting in new pipes on Spring Street, Wood, Oak, and Pearl, it was kind of a nightmare, but it's kind of nice that we don't have broken lines anymore. So, the growing pains are there, but thank everyone for their comments and for so many of you coming out, and I'm so looking forward to seeing this happen.
Thank you. Ms. Friedrichs.
I'm really pleased, as one of the newbies on the town council, to be here at this juncture because the town, I've, I've lived here like Ms. Wickman for twenty years, and the town just keeps getting more and more attractive, more, more, the more improvements we're able to bring in, the better we look, the better we feel. Right now, we have all kinds of great things going on. The increase in tax revenue that this is going to bring to the town is going to help offset some of our costs. This is going to be a very attractive business environment for new businesses. We're working on multimodal transportation plans to get people from the metro into the downtown, and the improvement on this property and the appearance and the functionality of it by Comstock is really going to make this town incredibly attractive to young families, and I could not be more thrilled. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McKenna.
First, I want to say it's really great to see this many-
First, I want to say it's really great to see this many people out tonight. It's really fantastic. I'm sure there's even more people at HCTV, so hello out there. Appreciate it.
Nobody's watching the World Series. They're all watching us.[849.32][849.32](laughter)
I like to think so, right? But I do want to thank everyone for their input. You know, most of the people that have spoken to me have been very positive about that, and some have been skeptical. And I definitely understand the skepticism. I think that's something that's a very positive thing, because at the end of the day, you know, we have to not only, you know, if we're moving forward with this, the most important thing is to make sure it's done the right way, so everyone, you know, we understand what's going on back and forth. So I think communication is very important on this. I'm excited about this. I mean, this is something that can, this is the one thing I can honestly say with people, when they talk about something about Herndon, they get a gleam in their eyes. I joke about Herndon being four point two square miles, endless possibilities. And those endless possibilities are in their eyes, because they can see what this can become. And that's the thing that's really amazing to me. And at the same time, with great, when you have endless possibilities, you have responsibility as well. So, we have to temper that and make sure everything is done right. We got many letters. I see some people have it. There was a fourteen-year-old, I won't steal anyone's thunder, but they want to be here from fourteen to forty. And I think we also have to look to the future as well. So having the future of our town, be excited about this, as well as every, you know, the demographics as well, I think is very important. So, I'm a yes on that based upon those things. However, I do have my concerns, and they will be, I mean, you can come to me still, as long as you're skeptic, I want to be there. So, I'm for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davidson?
I just wanted to say that I'm happy that this is coming to fruition at this point in time. One of the big things that are happening in the greater Herndon area is that the metro is coming, along with that, two stops that are just outside of the town limits. Along with that, there's a lot of development happening just outside of the town, that we need to compete with. We're happy with our downtown. We're happy that there are a lot of people that use it all the time. We need to keep that. We need to give people another reason to come downtown, to create a twenty-four-hour livelihood downtown. And this is the project to do it. So I'm very happy to see this come to fruition at this time.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor.
Yes. So again, a huge thank you to all the staff members who worked on this. This was such an amazing undertaking. And probably this council sat in more closed meetings than most councils, given that, you know, as the staff worked diligently, also with our legal counsel, and then they would come and update us. And again, every time, there was just so much progress being made. And for government projects like this, it really did work very well and very quickly, given the nature of this complex project. So thank you so much for all of that hard work and effort. And I loved that Mr. Rodriguez, thank you for your comments on that, confirming that we really did negotiate a good deal, and that the staff did a great job with that. So I appreciate some outside input on that. Certainly, several of you talked about the design, and how important making sure that, you know, that this isn't our historic district, that is certainly really important. As the Town Manager mentioned, right, the HPRB will definitely be a key part of this project. It's, you know, and Comstock is, of course, well aware of that part, and that will be critical. I loved that Mary Pauline Jones mentioned ADA compliance. That's certainly really critical, to make sure we're thinking about sustainability is one of our five tenants in our vision. So certainly, thank you Joe Plummer for mentioning sustainability, and Barbara Glakas for talking about potentially having a rooftop patio, or a green roof, which has so many potential benefits. Those are all great ideas. Traffic and parking are gonna continue to be a challenge, right? So we're gonna, I think we are gonna continue to mitigate for those two things as best we can. Certainly with parking, I think we're gonna have more than we do today. So that's a positive. I loved what Mr. Boland talked about, in terms of automatic cars. I can tell you, for me, I know you guys know, I walk and bike a lot. So my car is almost five years old, and I have thirty-six thousand miles. I know I'm probably the exception. But I do think more and more folks are like that, and especially as you move to a downtown core area, that does give you a lot of things at your access, where you can use your car less. So, just to keep that in mind. A lot of people, when we talk about development, or a lot of folks that talk to me, and they're like, "Oh, I want a really cool shop, or really cool restaurant." Those things only come with more patrons, right? So the fact that this includes two hundred and eighty-one apartments, I think is a huge part to getting those cool shops and restaurants that so many of you tell me you want. With Junction Square being developed, we do have two cool shops and restaurants coming soon. We have Risky Ricky's Wine Bar, which I think will be very cool. We have Eldon Street Tea Shop. And certainly with Comstock, I expect lots more cool shops and potential retail for us to take advantage of, again, because we have additional built-in patrons. We also have additional built-in patrons because of the arts center. The arts center to me is, and I know several of you mentioned this as well, it's really a critical part of this development. We see this as, I say "we," as in the collective council vision, we've talked about quite extensively, and the staff, as our, really the Herndon differentiator. I think, if you look at Stanton, Virginia, which is, I don't know, like a three-hour drive from here, Stanton, Virginia really developed as an arts community. And people drive pretty far to come to Stanton, Virginia. Given where we are in the Northern Virginia area, and traffic, right? And of course, we have tons of great cultural activities and events at our disposal in DC, but people don't always want to go to DC. So I think this is huge, and especially if you think about communities west of us, who will come to Herndon instead of going to DC. So really, having that arts center hub, bringing patrons, bringing folks that want to come to our shops, restaurants, spend money in our town, and just differentiate us, right? We are not, rest in, we're not Loud and One. We are small-town Herndon with lots and lots to offer, four point two square miles of endless possibilities, as Bill says. I love that phrase. And finally, I'll say what several folks have also said up here, that I really recognize that I'm so lucky to be up here at this juncture, when so many people, that are many of you in the audience, who have done a lot of work to get us to this point, and I just get to be up here to say yes to it at the end of the day. So thank you to all those folks who got us to this point.
Thank you. Well, when you go last, everybody's almost said everything. But of course, I'm gonna add a little bit to it. One thing that's very exciting to me about the people we've heard from with this project, is we've heard from people who are in their seventies, who grew up in Herndon. And tonight, there was a resident here that closed on her house, like, two months ago. So, I mean, there are a lot of people who are new, and longtime Herndon residents that are excited about the town, are ready to invest in it, and are behind this project. And I appreciate all of you coming out and support. I also appreciate the questions that we got. Mr. Clinton, and who I don't know if he's here, there's so many of you, I usually can spot people easier. He wrote us right away with a laundry list of questions, which was great, because we had asked most of those questions as we went through the process. But I love that our residents are so invested, and are smart, and interested, and they want to ask those hard questions. And your comments, Mr. Rodriguez, did really, thank you for saying that, because, you know, this is not any of our area of expertise. That's why we have people who are better at it than us, driving the deal. But it's really great to hear that you have confidence in it as well, given your background. We, I don't know how much we really dwelled on this, but the tenure projection of town tax revenues that we will get from this project are estimated at three million dollars over ten years. In Fairfax County, as you know, their tax rate is much higher than ours. And they will be benefiting from this as well, which is why Supervisor John Faust and his staff has been so helpful and supportive, along with Chairman Bulova, in helping with some grant funding to steer this arts center and parking garage going forward. Seven years ago, when I first became a member of the Herndon Town Council, I met with Dr. Jerry Gordon, who's the President of Fairfax County Economic Development Authority, just to introduce ourselves, and to talk with him about our vision for Herndon. And he told me then, that downtown Herndon should be the number-one site in Fairfax County's comprehensive plan for local arts centers. And so, that gives me a lot of confidence that we do have the right kind of project in our downtown going forward. I think, we've always harped on, you know, we've been talking about this for thirty years, let's get it done. I really think that, I do still feel that way, in a lot of ways. I moved here seventeen years ago, almost, and I thought there was gonna be a downtown in a couple of years. But turns out, a lot of people had that experience. But I really think that everything does happen the way it's supposed to happen. And this is really the right time and the right project for the town. So I think that all of those, the stumbles and the deals that didn't go through, I think helped us learn from our mistakes, and people who were working hard before a lot of us even lived in Herndon, to get to the right project right now. Someone asked about the schools and the impact. I did, actually, along with the Town Manager, just recently met with Fairfax County school officials, the area superintendent, and I can't remember his title, the facilities manager, about this very thing. And they had all been in contact with the community development. So that is on the radar for how this will impact the schools, absolutely. And we were in there banging our fists, saying, "When are we getting another elementary school? When's that high school gonna get built? And when are we gonna be renovated at Herndon Elementary?" So, it's definitely on our minds. Elvis and the Herndon Festival, I know. The Herndon Festival is, I see Cindy back there going, "Yeah." Parks and Rec and the festival committee, this has been on their mind for many years, because we've been talking about redeveloping this area, you know, for thirty-plus years. The Herndon Festival's thirty-seven years old, so this isn't a surprise to them. But there are a couple of options in the works that we can't disclose yet, because we're working with a couple of our businesses in town. But in the coming months, fairly soon, we will be discussing options. And it may be possible that the festival looks the same next year. All of that depends on, you know, where we are with Comstock. Did you want to jump in? Sorry, I may be talking out of turn.
I believe we're gonna have a discussion, I am, in November on the Herndon Festival.
At a work session?
At a work session, yes. And about Elvis's trees, we've worked with Comstock today about getting language and insurance coverage, and it looks like Elvis will be able to sell his trees one more year.[1509.16][1509.16](laughter)
Elvis will be in the building.
That just came in at four o'clock today, so that was timely.[1513.33][1513.33](laughter)
That is my favorite sign in the town of Herndon, I do have to say. And I'm excited about the, there were some skepticism early on about rental properties in the downtown Herndon from some people, because people were saying, "Oh, we want people to be invested in the town. We want them to buy." Well, there are a lot of opportunities to buy in downtown Herndon already. But we heard from several people, there aren't a lot of smaller rental units. And there's certainly not a luxury rental unit option in the town right now. I think when metro develops, there will be probably more of that. It's gonna be much denser than this. But I'm excited about increasing our housing stock, and having something for maybe an entry-level sort of patron. And thank you, Bill, for not stealing my thing. He saw my big pink piece of paper in the evil eye, like, "Do not say this." We recently have put together a youth advisory council in the town of Herndon. And we got more applications for that than anything we've ever asked for. It was really great. But one of our newly-appointed members, who's fourteen years old, hand-delivered this, by the way. So they're not all just attached to their cell phone. She hand-delivered this to the clerk's office today, and talked about, you know, she's fourteen years old, she wants to live here when she's an adult. And a lot of towns, I don't, I didn't know this stuff when I was fourteen, but a lot of towns, it is a struggle across the Commonwealth, especially in more rural areas. You know, the younger generations are moving out of their small towns. They can't retain them there. So, we're lucky in Herndon, we're in the DC metro area, so there is a lot to offer. But she's talked specifically about this kind of development being something that would make her want to stay here. So, I appreciate that. And then I told her mother how excited I was about this, and she said that she didn't even show it to her mother before she brought it down. I love this kid. I think she may be the mayor one of these days. She said that she was worried about the pink paper, and her mother, and she told her mother, "Mom, I have got to stand out in a sea of white paper." So, it worked. So, thank you, Miss Money. We appreciate your comments. So, I'll stop talking. I'm obviously excited about it. The real work begins now. Thank you to the staff, and all of our representatives, and Reed Smith, and Lynn Wales, and everybody. The real work begins now, and we really appreciate what's gone into it so far. So, if there's no further discussion, anything else left to say, I will call the question on the motion. This is the motion to approve the comprehensive agreement, made by Councilmember Cunningham, seconded by Councilmember Olum. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Yay![1670.41][1670.41](applause) And now, is there a motion to adopt ordinance seventeen oh twenty-three, to provide for the sale of the town-owned land on Center, Eldon, and Station Streets, and any town interest in the eventually vacated portion of Vine Street? So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay. So who was that? Olum?
Olum.
And seconded by Vice Mayor? Okay, discussion on the motion. Ms. Olum.
Yes. Since the school issue was brought up, next Tuesday, November seventh, there is a school bond issue on the ballot. So if you're interested in our schools in Fairfax County, check it out, and maybe you want to vote yes.
Okay. Madam Vice Mayor? No. Any comments on the resolution at hand? Any other comments? Okay, well, this is the- Roll call. The ordinance to actually provide for the sale of the town-owned land. So it does require a roll-call vote. So, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Davidson?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna?
Yes.
Councilmember Olum?
Yes.
And Mayor Merkel?
Yes. That motion carries. And yay, I'm so excited. That brings us to the final item, which is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? And that concludes our agenda this evening.
Madam Mayor, seeing no other business, I move we adjourn.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And we stand adjourned at eight forty-four PM. Woo woo! I think I win the poll on that. You do.[1789.71][1789.71](laughter) Thank you all so much for coming.
The over-under.[1793.41][1793.41](laughter)
If you were on The Price is Right, you'd win.
I would have won.